All right, we'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission to order today at 5:35 PM. First for introductions, my name's Hal Hutchinson, I'm the Chair. To my immediate right is Jason Cataris, the Vice Chair. Farther to the right is Commissioner Robert Grant. To my immediate left is Commissioner Chad Zeal, and farther on to the left is Commissioner Matt Mitchell. As for staff, we have the Director, Megan Nelmes, Senior Planner, Holly Wilhelm, Associate Planner, no, Holly Wilhelm, Associate Planner.
Oh, Lori.
And Lori. Lori, help me with your last name. Hall. Thank you. And we have Eric Nelson, the County Attorney. So, I'd like to make mention first that the item that was previously on the agenda for the, what was it, Overland? It didn't even show up on the.
Yes, Overland subdivision.
Overland Estates, major subdivision. If any of you are here to address that, that's been pulled from the agenda, so no need to stay and spend your time on that.
Do you do a pledge to start this meeting?
We will, we will. I just wanted to make that so everybody doesn't have to stay if they don't want to. All right, so the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board of the Natrona County Commissioners. Our decisions are subject to approval, conditional approval, denial, or modification by the Board of County Commissioners. For each application on the agenda, we will hold an official public hearing. The hearings are recorded, and there will be written minutes of this meeting. After the Commission holds a public hearing, unless an application is tabled or withdrawn, the Board of County Commissioners will hold another public hearing for the application. Tonight, everyone will have an opportunity to address the Commission. First, those in favor of an application may address the Commission, then those opposed to the application may address us. Finally, the applicant may give a brief rebuttal. When the Chair recognizes you, please come to the podium and state clearly your name and address before giving your comments. This is not a forum for public outcry or speaking from the audience. You must be recognized by the Chair before addressing the Commission. If a person's conduct is out of order, the Chair may give the person a warning. If the person continues the conduct, or if conduct is extremely out of order, the person may be directed to leave immediately. So hopefully, we're not dealing with any of that tonight. All right, so the first actual action thing is Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on the agenda tonight is consideration of the May 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. The Chair would entertain a motion for that.
I move to accept the May Meeting Minutes as written.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Meeting Minutes as prepared. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously. Okay, new business. First order of business is Conditional Use Permit 20-002, and that's the Dynasolar Conditional Use Permit Extension Request. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board. Before you, our first case tonight is the Dynasolar Solar Utility Installation Conditional Use Permit Request. And their applicant, Dynasolar LLC, and their agent Christine Michael with Enyo Renewable Energy are requesting an extension of the construction commencement timeline set forth in the Conditional Use Permit, which was approved via Resolution 2920 on June 2 of 2020. It's for the solar installation plant just north of Casper in portions of Section 7 and 18, Township 34 North, Range 79 West, and Sections 1, 12, 13, 14, 23, 24, and 25 of Township 34 North, Range 80 West. The project covers approximately 3,591 acres. And a little background on the case, in June of 2020, Dynasolar was granted a Conditional Use Permit to install a solar utility project on lands within Natrona County. Condition number three of that permit required that construction of the project commence no later than December of 2022, or a new Conditional Use Permit would be required. Dynasolar has submitted materials requesting a modification of the CUP conditions to allow an extension of the construction commencement date to December of 2026. They requested the extension due to lack of obtaining a power purchase agreement with Rocky Mountain Power in their 2020 clean energy solicitations. Dynasolar stated in their request that they are optimistic about this project's chance of success with future solicitations from Rocky Mountain Power. And staff has reviewed the submitted materials and finds that no substantial change has occurred to the project, and that granting the construction commencement extension would not alter the intent of the county's approval of the CUP. We also included a copy of the original staff report and recommendation that was approved via Resolution 2920 in your packet. And with that, staff recommends approval of the Conditional Use Permit Amendment. And I know the applicant is here, and I can help answer any questions.
With that, any questions for Megan and staff? Would the applicant like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on your application, please?
Mr. Chairman, we would. My name is John Masterson. I'm the attorney for this project. You will also hear, I'm going to give you a short introduction, and Christine Michael will speak to the nature of the project in general. We also have a consultant who will speak to the battery energy storage system, the BES system that we're seeking your approval to install with the project, as well as some of these supply chain problems that have plagued, I guess, the nation for a year, which contributes to the reason for the extension request. So with that, I think I'd like to just give you a short overview, and then turn it over to Ms. Michael. I would note, one other thing, Mr. Chair, there's two applications concerning Dynasolar before you. One is the extension request. The second one is the request to install that BES system at Dynasolar. Because they're so interrelated, we may be speaking about this, but we formatted this first part for the extension request, but parts of them overlap, and the project is the same. So with your permission and the permission of the Commission, there will, I think there will be some overlap in what you're going to hear, if that's acceptable to you.
Anyone have a problem with that? Carry on.
All right, thank you, sir. We already have a permit in hand for the Dynasolar project, as the staff, who, by the way, we'd like to thank them for their work and their assistance in this as well. They've served the county well, we think. They have approved or recommended the approval of this permit. The original permit was obtained in June, as staff has mentioned, and it contains various terms and conditions. We are not seeking to change the footprint of the project. We're not seeking to change the type of panels, the megawatt size of the project, or any of those aspects of the projects. There's two specific things, as you've heard. One is the extension of time for the commencement of construction. We've requested until December 2026. And the second, which hasn't, I guess, in a sense, been teed up for you exactly yet, is the addition of the battery energy storage system. As to the extension, we're going to lay out the reasons and the rationale for it, many of which you will hear are out of Dynasolar's hands. Nothing has changed as to the factors that we believe you are to consider in evaluating the request from the original application, except we have updated the studies that are required to be submitted to you for your consideration. As to the BES system, I think it's kind of interesting, and we'll explain what it is and what it does, and why we'd like to add it. I'd note that as to the BES system, there really is no change as to how the project looks, unless you know precisely what you are looking for, as it's those batteries, as you'll see, they're tucked away in a corner of the project, and would be nearly invisible to a casual observer. They would be contained within the footprint that's already been permitted by this body and by the Commission. It has no negative impact on any of the factors you're to consider, whether that's traffic or socioeconomic input, character of the neighborhood. The BES system has no impact on any of that. What it does do is make the project more attractive to the eventual purchaser of power. It makes the project more reliable, makes it more economic, and consequently, it results in increased tax revenue to the county. We've worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission on that as well, or on your staff, excuse me. They've also recommended approval of that. In discussing this among the Dynasolar people, we think it's kind of unusual to present you with a situation where we already have a permit, and we already have a permit. We're not trying to add to it as far as land or changing the character of the project. So what we've been, what we've talked about is trying to balance respecting your time with telling you more than you want, or things that you have already heard. So to, I guess we're asking that if you have, or the body has any questions, specific questions, we're prepared to answer those. But again, we want to honor your time. We don't want to replay something for you that you've already heard, or that you're familiar with, or have already considered and voted upon back when this project was originally approved. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Ms. Michael, come forward. She'll give an introduction and a quick overview of the project, and she'll identify the various people who are on the phone, who can answer questions, and who've participated in all of the studies. And please, we encourage you to ask whatever questions you would like, and we'll do our best to answer them to your satisfaction. If there are no questions, Mr. Chair, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Christine Michael. My address is 3658 East Golden Oaks Drive, Cottonwood Heights, Utah. And thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I wanted to just quickly introduce the project team that will be here to answer questions should they come up for either the extension or the storage CUP application. With me on the phone is Spencer Martin with Eminem Environmental, and he put together the application and is our environmental expert. Also on the phone is Evelyn Carpenter from Solus Consulting, and she will be providing the technical support on the storage site. We did meet earlier today with the fire marshal in Natrona County and presented this presentation to him, and so we're happy to do the same thing for you. And then Ron Dutton, who's not with us tonight, was our socioeconomic expert. And should you have any questions on that, I'll do my best to answer those. I think we're just sticking to the extension for right now, and so as Megan said, we're asking for this extension because in 2020, we had submitted for Pacific Core Request for Proposal Rocky Mountain Power. They were expected to procure about somewhere between 300 and 400 megawatts of solar from Wyoming. They ended up not procuring any solar power from Wyoming, and thus, we are asking tonight for this extension. Pacific Core now has an additional request for proposal. They're seeking renewables from their systemwide, and that will be due, that solicitation will be due in February, on February 14, Valentine's Day, and they will let us know sometime in April if we will be awarded that contract. There's really not much difference between what we applied for then and now, but I would say the main difference is that what we have are four signed interconnections for a total of 240 megawatts for solar, and we can add the storage to that. And so if you look at Pacific Core's system, there aren't a lot of projects that have these signed interconnection agreements, where you have a known amount to plug into the system and a known timeframe when you can do that. So we feel like we're in a very good position for that. And the reason why we're asking for the storage to be included later tonight is because Pacific Core and all of their projects that they're procuring in the future has basically a requirement that if you submit a solar proposal, you need to also have storage with that. So we'd like to ask for that. So with that, any questions on the extension that we're requesting this evening?
Just for my own edification on this, but for the power output of what these solar panels, like, did that, compared to Casper, maybe with the daily use of Casper on a daily basis, like, is the solar panel, like, given a power of Casper, like, whatever.
Commissioner, can, sorry, can you turn on your microphone?
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, so I just had, yeah, just for the power output, just so I kind of have an idea of what kind of power output we're talking about, like, would this, like, if, assuming it was a sunny day, and it was in the middle of summer, and everybody's running their air conditioner, is the power output, is that enough to power Casper?
I think it's safe to say that would far exceed.
Oh, would it? Okay. So then the rest of it's going to be put on the grid or stored on the battery? And my next question is, so I know a little about lithium, because I was going to look at it putting on our house, but my understanding is that the lithium, you know, loses 50% of its power in 10 years. Is that true with these larger storage systems? Like, do you have to exchange the batteries out?
Sure. Maybe if we can, if you don't mind, if we could reserve, or we could have Evelyn, if it's okay with Megan, just present on the battery storage now, if you'd like, and she can answer that.
Sure, I'm just interested as to how all that works. And then my last question is, you know, I kind of looked at also the supply of lithium, and just my own, like, I guess 50% of it's produced in Australia, and I think they are kind of starting to mine it here in the U.S., but I'm always curious as to, as we kind of put these lithium batteries, and everybody's going to it, is there like a supply issue with lithium, or is there so much of it that that's not really an issue? It's just kind of for my own edification on the stuff.
Thank you for your questions. I'll let Evelyn, she'll write those down, and Evelyn, you can speak to those. Is that okay, Evelyn? She might be on mute.
Sure.
Sure.
Sure, do you want me to speak to them now, or do you want me to, do you want to finish, and then I'll address them in the presentation?
Chairman, if I can make a call on that.
What do you guys think?
I think at the end is fine. These guys might address some of that, too.
My preference would be to address the extension first, and then go with the battery.
That's what I would recommend, is let's have a vote on the extension, and then we'll move to the battery storage permit.
That's okay with you, Mr. Mitchell, we'll put it on then.
Okay.
Was that all you had for a presentation for that?
I'd be happy to go into more details, but I think that's the gist. We're requesting this extension from you. We think it's an excellent project. It brings enormous economic benefits to the county with little services, and would appreciate a positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. All right, so I guess we've gotten the basic information from the applicant and the staff, and it's time to move into the public hearing portion of this agenda item. So with that, call a public hearing to order on the application for the Dynasolar, too many pieces of paper in here, Conditional Use Permit 20-002, Dynasolar Conditional Use Permit Extension Request, specifically for the extension request, we're talking here first. So anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor, would you please approach the podium? With your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening. Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane, Natrona County. Apologize for my outburst earlier, but when you went off script, I thought we might be skipping the pledge, and just want to make sure we address that.
Appreciate you keeping me on point.
I'll make this short and sweet. I am in support of extending this. I think that Pacific Core is just continuing to consume more and more solar and renewables, and I think we want Wyoming to be the economic beneficiaries of these developments. So for those reasons, I'm in support, and happy to answer any questions, but that's the extent of my thoughts. Thanks.
Questions for Mr. Schneider? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come
John Cornquinn, 1650 South Walnut Street. Thank you for letting me speak on this. I think it's a great project out there. There's a, and I think that in the past, they've, you guys have approved it, and I think it should go forward. There's one question I do have on it. Does that affect, does this project affect the proposed road that goes to, out to Six Mile Road?
West Wind Road?
Yes, sir. I see on the maps that there's a road that goes through there, or a gap there, and I didn't know if that was the road.
Actually, Mr. Cornquinn, I had that same question, and I was wondering where that might have ended up with the Commissioners two years ago.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going off a foggy memory, but my recollection, if it's correct, was that there was a corridor reserved for construction should it occur of the West Winds Road. So I think that was, is contemplated in the Conditional Use Permit.
This project's not using that potential road? I see that you have access from Melody, I believe it is.
That's the level of detail I would have to turn to Ms. Michael to address.
We'll put that on our list to ask Ms. Michael later, please. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, call the public hearing closed. Mr. Masterson or Ms. Michael, would you guys like to come up and give a, provide a summary rebuttal information?
If I can set this on the table, sir.
Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, we'd like to respond to the question about West Winds Road. If you look at the north end of the solar array, you can see there's a carve-out there. That's for the West Winds Road, should it come to pass. That actual alignment isn't necessarily defined. If something happens between now and construction and it needs to move, we have the ability to do that before, you know, in the design phase. So we're very flexible with where that would be, but we have set aside that acreage to accommodate that expansion of the road. As it relates to access, if the road were built, we'd certainly prefer to use that as the access to the site. If otherwise, we'll use our option of Melody Lane, which is what we had talked to the former Commission about. The other, you can see the other line that goes through the center of the project in the south, that's a power line easement, so, but just to make you aware, and I believe in your packet, you'll see a survey, and Shane is here also, from WLC and can speak to that, if you don't believe me.
I guess my question, and maybe it was a question of Mr. Cornquinn as well, is what responsibility does Dynasolar have for completing that road right through the middle of their development?
We don't have the responsibility of completing that. If we were to, I've spoken to some of your county commissioners about this particularly. Even if we were to get an easement, we can't give that easement to you and say, here's the easement for West Winds. You would still have to obtain your own easement. So we're happy to work with the county and share in costs for that, but in terms of getting the easement for you, I don't believe that's something that I can personally do for you. I believe you would have to get those easements yourself, and we could share in the costs.
I guess I was thinking more in terms of, not necessarily you're actually building it, but you're providing financial means to pay for it.
I think that's a discussion we would have with the county as it relates to the building permit. That's what I've been told, that there's some flexibility in the building permit and paying for the roads. I can't, I guess that would be in a development agreement. I'm not an attorney, so maybe I should let John answer that question of how that would work, but that wasn't contemplated in the initial approval of the project.
Okay, thank you. May I ask a quick, so Jason and Eric, is that what you guys, put you on the spot a little bit. I remember, Planning and Zoning, we asked that very same question two years ago, and or we brought it up, that that West Wind had been envisioned, and even the county commissioners had been involved 10 years or so ago. And then Dynasolar showed up, and we brought it up here in the Planning and Zoning Commission, that as big as that operation is, and as much of that roadway cuts right through their development, it would make sense that the county would have some support from the developer, as they would any other developer running a road through their development, through their property.
So, Mr. Chairman, my recollection is that there was the set aside for the acreage for the potential construction of the West Wind Road. I vaguely recall some discussion that was similar to what Ms. Michael indicated, that, you know, participation by Dynasolar or Enyo with the county would be negotiated separately in terms of potential cost sharing, or however that would proceed. And to my knowledge, I mean, I have not been involved in any discussions since that time in 2020, so I think that's, from my point of view, it's an open question, and there's a number of ways that that could go at this point.
Would it be appropriate for Planning and Zoning to suggest that to Board of County Commissioners, that that be a consideration in their, in their consideration of the application?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so without having reviewed this, and I apologize, I think at this point, since what we're looking at is simply the change in the date, I think that would really kind of spill over into kind of renegotiation of the entire permit. And, you know, my recollection is the way this was viewed in 2020, is they were really separate issues, that the county wasn't, you know, was going to grant the permit, try to support the development, and then address that, you know, separately. And, I mean, I don't frankly know if the county has any imminent plans, imminent being in the foreseeable future, to actually construct that roadway, so I think it's something we can look at separately without attempting to address it in the Conditional Use Permit.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nelson's recollection is better than he claims it to be. That is mine as well. Just to remind the Commission, since, and to elaborate on what Ms. Michael said, the, all the land that this project is, will be on is private, and the Dynasolar has a lease with the private landowner. So that's the reason why Dynasolar cannot guarantee that any sort of an easement would be granted, and exactly where it would be. So that's another factor in why it's a little bit nebulous.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the application for the, for the timing? Any further discussion on the application for the, for the time extension? Chair would entertain a motion on this subject.
I'd move to approve the extension, which I believe is CUP 20-002, as requested.
A second to motion. We have a motion and a second to approve conditional use permit 20-002. That is DynaSolar conditional use permit extension, time extension request. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the conditional use permit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, seeing none. So unanimous that the time extension conditional use permit is approved. All right, moving on to the second part that we've gotten quite a bit of lead in already, that is DynaSolar Battery Energy Storage System, BESS, conditional use permit. Any further staff report on that, Megan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board, I have a brief staff report for you. Again, the applicant is DynaSolar and with this conditional use permit application, 22.02 CUP, they're requesting a conditional use permit for the installation of a 440 watt, megawatt battery energy storage system. It'll be located on a 25-acre parcel within the project area of the solar utility installation, which received a conditional use permit approved via Resolution 2920 in June of 2020. Some planning considerations. The battery interchange systems are rechargeable battery systems that store energy from the solar arrays, which are released when power's needed most. It's anticipated that this project will be completed in two phases, with each phase providing approximately 240 megawatts of energy storage. They anticipate Phase One commencing in September of 2024 and Phase Two in November of 2025. The standards for conditional use permits under our current regulations, will granting the CUP contribute to an overburdening of county services? No, it does not. The battery storage project doesn't include residential and will not, residential uses, excuse me, and will not place any additional burdens on the county's educational parks or recreation systems. The applicants have included adequate public safety measures to be implemented during construction and operation of the project to address fire and public safety. Will granting the CUP cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? No. Peak project-related traffic will occur during the construction phase. They've included a traffic study and transportation plan with their application and are open to a road use agreement with the county. And again, no residential component, so no population increase is anticipated. Will granting the CUP impair the, impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? No, it's already been approved for the development of the solar utility installation and will not significantly, significantly alter the character of the area. And will granting the CUP detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare or nullify the intent of our land use plan? And no, the project is anticipated to generate significant public benefits in terms of the increased tax revenues derived from constructions and operation as well as associated employment and payroll benefits to the county. There will be no noise impact as the best facilities and inverters are expected to generate only low-level hum sounds primarily associated with operating of cooling fans. There are no visual impacts associated with the project and the project does fall within the Casper bar none growth management area. And according to that plan, the area is intended to provide for efficiency of infrastructure of water sewer and street through which regional delivery protects the environment within the growth management area that the project falls. In the enterprise neighborhood, which the designated future land use in that area is projected to be industrial with development coordination between Barnon and Casper. And with that, the following planning considerate, or permit considerations are recommended by staff, that they obtain all required construction permits for each phase of construction of the system prior to commencement. They need to work with YDOT and County Road and Bridge on appropriate access permits and road improvements or impair agreements. And finally, the construction shall be completed by November 30th of 2026. Any extension of time shall require an amended conditional use permit. And with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed, or the requested CUP. And again, we can answer any questions.
That's a mouthful.
It was.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions for staff on the application? All right. Mr. Masterson, I believe you have a.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, and excuse me, I didn't need to talk over you. I have one thing before Ms. Michael comes up, if I may go to the map.
Absolutely.
I wanted to make sure that we explained to the commission where that BESS unit was and is located in that small purplish, reddish form of there. I just wanted to make sure that we were all, we all knew where it was.
What's, what's acreage of that, just off the bat?
Twenty-eight acres.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Chair, with your question, Ms. Michael will take the microphone.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, is it possible to put the other slide deck on? You may remember me from coming before you six months ago, so I, I don't, hopefully it's okay if I don't reintroduce myself and the company. Great, if you could just advance, probably keep going. Go, keep going.
Actually, Ms. Michael.
Yes.
It was a little more than six months ago, it was a couple of years ago, right?
Well, I was here for the anticline permit, which you.
The wind towers.
The wind towers.
Were all the commissioners sitting when we were introduced, Ms. Michael originally? Okay, okay. I didn't want us.
I, I know you were here, yes. You could keep going, thank you. I think a couple more. One more. Okay, that'd be perfect, thank you. So this was the slide I was mentioning earlier. I just wanted to put into context how many megawatts of solar that Rocky Mountain Power will be looking for in the next RFP. So in their service territory, which is five states, Wyoming, Utah, Washington, Oregon, Northern California, they're going to be looking for 1,150 megawatts of solar plus battery energy storage. So just wanted to get, point that out, so it's highly competitive. Next slide, please. As Megan pointed out, these are what you need to consider when approving or denying the permit and John will end the presentation with why we think we will meet those requirements. You can go to the next slide. I think it's important to just talk about the economic benefits. As John and Shane both said, we're looking at a battery energy storage facility within the footprint of our solar project that takes up about 28 acres. And you can see here that the property taxes generated in the first year from this, the full, if all 440 megawatts were to be built, would be $4.37 million in the first year. Obviously, that declines over time, but over the life of a 35-year project, that amounts to about $72 million. And this facility is unmanned, requires very little service and maintenance, but I think you can see that it provides fairly significant revenues. Next slide, please. Here are the economic benefits for the solar, or for the sales and lodging and use taxes. It will bring one-time benefit of $4.67 million and then about $60,000 for retail. That doesn't include lodging. Next slide, please. So when you add the storage and the solar combined, if approved, over the 35 years, that's about $148 million to the county for both the solar and the storage for a 440-megawatt project. Please advance. And then here is the site plan, which I believe you have in your packets and which John laid out. What we'll be talking about right now is the 25 acres and the gray hatched area and the pink would be the solar, the battery storage facilities. And that's what I'd like Evelyn to speak to because she's much more of an expert at that than I am. So with that, I'd like to switch the presentation to Evelyn and I think you'll have, she'll be able to answer your questions and, and hopefully leave you speechless. So Evelyn, are you prepared to speak? We have the first, well, we're going to be switching the presentations to the other slide.
Yes, and so we, the first couple of slides in that presentation were to support the extension if needed. And so if we could start on Slide Five, please. And it should say Battery Energy Storage Application.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, yes.
Evelyn, this is John Masterson. Before you start, can you give the commission your name and just a brief overview of your education and the work you're doing right now? Thank you, Ms. Michael.
Certainly. My name is Evelyn Carpenter. I'm a licensed civil engineer. I have a bachelor's and a master's in civil engineering and an MBA. I run a renewable energy company headquartered in Fort Collins, Colorado, and we provide technical and commercial advisory services for wind, solar, and energy storage. We've worked on some of the largest energy storage projects in the country over the last few years, as well as some of the largest solar facilities. And so I'm providing services to DynaSolar to help explain to you all what it's going to look like and help you understand some of the impacts on the community and what, you know, what your expectations, to help answer those expectations and also answer the questions that you have. So with that, I will, if we're on Slide Five. So the, the next slide is why add storage. And Christine mentioned the, the market reasons for doing this. We have seen the majority of projects that are now being developed across the United States are contemplating energy, solar energy plus energy storage. And so it's, it's really, the industry's been developing over the last couple of years and we're just seeing a lot more utilities requesting storage as a part of their solar projects. Some of the benefits of adding storage and the reason that the utilities are asking for it is because it helps to smooth electricity pricing. It aligns when you can supply energy along with the demand. And so we're able to take solar energy and capture it during the day and discharge it with the batteries later in the afternoon so that when you get to peak times when people come home and turn on their air conditioning, get to their homes, we're now injecting solar energy back into the grid when we don't have as much sun as before. So we're, that's helping to smooth the pricing and it's managing the evening demand peaks that we see. The other thing is, as we start to install, install solar, we see sometimes that we're, we have excess supply during daylight hours. And so what this also helps us do is instead of curtailing the energy and not using it, we're taking any excess solar that is generated, we're putting it in the batteries and discharging it later. So it helps to mitigate any curtailment of these facilities and it just makes the projects a lot more marketable. So again, Pacificor is coming out with an RFP and they're saying we want storage for all of our solar project facilities. If you go to the next slide, this helps to explain the timeline. So if you look at where we were back in 2019 and the amount of projects that were contemplating solar, that has increased and we're expecting 25% of all solar installed in the U.S. is going to be, by 2025 is going to have storage components. So what this is doing is making this project much more competitive and marketable. Christine explained the high demand of developers responding to the Pacificor RFP. So this will take your project and make it much more favorable than other folks that are not able to put storage in, offering for that RFP. So that, that will increase the marketability of this project. So battery technologies, so the battery technologies over time have been changing. And so when we first started putting battery, battery energy storage into residences, as an example, we were using lead-acid batteries. Those are the types of batteries that you see in your cars. The industry has been maturing and progressing and the most commonly installed type of batteries that we're putting in right now are lithium-ion batteries. There are other battery types available that are under development. So lithium-ion batteries right now are the most popular for deployment because they charge and they discharge and we typically do a full charge and a discharge one time per day, so 365 cycles per year. They're able to handle that kind of demand and that kind of capacity. Lithium-ion batteries are also lighter than some of the other technologies and so they have a higher energy density for their weight. There's also no need to maintain them other than working on the heating and cooling systems and things like that, but the batteries themselves are contained and sealed and so we don't need to go in and add fluids and modify the batteries or do anything to them. They're pretty self-contained. The type of batteries, the lithium-ion batteries are, are much more similar to your phone battery as opposed to your car battery. So your, your cell phones all have lithium-ion batteries and it's, it's very similar technology. One of the questions that was asked prior to the presentation was on the fact that the batteries degrade. And so someone had asked a question about over a 10-year cycle, do the batteries need to be thrown out or discharged? So as batteries cycle back and forth, they, they start to lose their efficiency and so over time, the batteries will degrade. How we address that in the industry is we do something called augmentation. So there's a schedule where we add additional capacity throughout the life of the project. There's a couple of different ways that we do this. Sometimes the enclosures, and we'll show you a picture of what those look like, we save space in them and then we add additional batteries over the life of the project. The other way to augment is to add a new enclosure. And again, I'll show you what they look like in a moment, but as the batteries degrade, we, we add more to maintain the same capacity. So hopefully that addresses the question that somebody had about the cycling and the 10-year decline in battery life. The second question that somebody asked was about lithium supply. And let me talk about this a little bit. So lithium is, there is high demand right now for lithium batteries. Cars are, use lithium technology cell phones as well as energy storage. This is the most common technology that we're using today. That technology is changing and evolving and developing and that will change as the market changes. So there are other types of batteries, as I mentioned, nickel-iron and slow batteries and some other technologies that are starting to come into play. And by the time this project is built, we still may be installing lithium-ion or maybe to a different technology. So I'm talking today about lithium-ion because that's the most likely. However, if we do see, you know, supply chain shortages of lithium and things like that, the technologies will change and develop in advance, you know, depending on when the project is installed. So hopefully that addresses the question regarding lithium supply. If you go to the next slide, so how do these systems work? These are batteries, and I'll show a picture on the next slide of what the enclosure actually looks like. They're, these batteries are put into structures, they're not occupied. So they're, they're structures that are comprised of racks and electronics and different pieces and parts within the system. The batteries store electricity in direct current. We put a power conversion system, so it's another little box, a little structure that sits next to it, or it's really a piece of equipment. And so together, the piece of equipment next to it, which is called a power conversion system, and then the storage enclosure together make up a battery energy storage system. So when we're talking about a battery energy storage system, each individual system is a larger box and a smaller box, which I'll show you a picture of. The way that we configure the, the best system, they either charge and discharge from the photovoltaics themselves or from the grid or both. And so there's different ways to configure the project and how we configure it will be dependent on the needs of Pacificor and what they're looking to do with the system. Each of these enclosures have an HVAC system on them and that keeps the batteries within the range needed. So if, you know, in your cold winters and your hot summers, the HVAC are going to keep the batteries within a specific temperature to make sure that there's no, no overheating of the batteries. And then there's a sophisticated system within each of the battery enclosures to mitigate battery overheating and that's called a thermal runaway mitigation system. We walked through this with the fire marshal earlier today and answered all those questions about how those systems work. So if you go to the next slide, this is an example. They, they all look a bit different, but they're generally, they generally look like this. They all look a bit different, but they're generally, they generally look like this. So if you look at the picture, there's a metal enclosure that looks a little bit like a shipping container. The HVAC unit is mounted on the side. In the case of these, we have some roll-up doors. This is a specific design for a specific project. They also have doors that will open up with handles and look more like a door. And then the back thing in white there is the power conversion system unit. So the battery enclosure and the PCS units themselves together form a battery energy storage system. If you go to the next slide, this is what that, what it looks like inside the roll-up door. So you can see it's a series of racking, and the picture on the right are the actual batteries installed in the racking. So this isn't a structure that somebody goes in. There is a door on the other side where somebody can walk in and look at the control systems of it, but nobody is ever in this enclosure when it's operating, you know, and they're not standing in this enclosure. So it's not a manned system. The batteries charge and discharge, they're controlled with electronics and sophisticated control system. Moving down, just to talk a little bit about fire suppression. So, and we went through this with the fire department today. Each of the enclosures has its own fire suppression system within it. And we use two different methodologies for this. There's a system, a water-based system, or there's a chemical-based system. And the battery manufacturer themselves specifies which one we should be using with their technology. So as of today, we don't yet know what that system will be. We know it's going to be one of these two systems, but that will depend on the technology actually selected for the project during the design process. But this is an example of how we work with fire suppression within the battery energy And then the last slide there is about refurbishment and reuse and second life. So as the batteries cycle, they do degrade, as I said, and so we do augmentation. When the battery itself is done and it's at a state where we can't be using it within the system, the batteries are now being redistributed and reused for potentially reconditioning electric vehicles or using backup battery systems and things like that. So the batteries are being recycled by marine tractors, but they're also being put into a second-use life because the batteries don't get used up entirely before we replace them. So there is some, it's like with your cell phone, you're still able to use it, but it's just slow and it's charging slower. But there is a second life to that battery that's used. And so it's similar for these systems as well, where the batteries could potentially be deployed somewhere else after they're done with the system. And so that's the technical aspects of the system. So I'll go ahead and have a, take a pause there and see if there's any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, and maybe I'll get into it here a little bit further, but help me understand the interaction between stormwater and battery storage. Do they, are they compatible with each other?
Yeah, so we'll design a stormwater management plan for the site that will make sure that water is not entering into the enclosures. And that's a great question because, you know, electronics are sensitive to water, we all know, and you don't want them to be flooded, right? And so, you know, when we design these projects, we'll do a full civil design of the site where we'll put together a stormwater management plan and best management practices to control runoff and drainage and all of those kinds of things to ensure that water is not entering the enclosures. The enclosures themselves typically sit on piles, and so they are elevated slightly above grade, and we typically put gravel around them. So we manage that drainage in the site design.
So on this one exhibit here, it's showing the batteries being placed in the stormwater detention area. Is that just managing the stormwater as it's related around the batteries, or is that the detention area for a bigger area?
So I don't have the drawing in front of me, but the stormwater would be managed around that so that it did not interact with the battery enclosures. So the site will need to be designed to accommodate that.
If I may, I'm sorry, Evelyn. This is Shane Porter with WLC. Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. So on that, what you're seeing there is stormwater detention. We put that in there just knowing that we're going to, we're going to grade 28 acres of flat, pretty much impervious ground, and we're just holding that stormwater back to not let it go downstream. It has nothing to do, I mean, it's taking the stormwater from the site, directing it to that detention pond, and then slowly releasing it offsite.
When you say the site, you're talking about the hundreds or?
The 20, just the best site.
Okay, okay, okay. That, that part makes sense to me. Evelyn, the other question I have is, is that area like lined, or how do you contain the fire suppression chemicals and/or water in the event that the fire suppression is discharged?
So the fire suppression system, whether it's a gas-based or the water, well, let's talk about the water-based system first. So what we're doing is the battery enclosures, and each battery has a, what's called a battery management system attached to it, and every single of the batteries that are, that were shown in that picture has temperature monitors and other types of monitors on it. And so the system is monitored 24/7 by a remote operations center, and if we see individual cells getting overheated, the system alarms. And then if it gets to the point where there's a potential for a thermal event, what happens is the water system deploys, but it's only deploying on the specific cells that are hot. So it's a very targeted system, and so you are generating a volume of water to cool it, but you're not flooding the entire enclosure. So, you know, when you, when you're flooding the enclosure, you are going to have runoff water. There are drains in the floor of the enclosures, and that water will be directed away from the enclosures. In the event of a gas system, what happens is the gas system, you know, floods the enclosure and puts out any potential, or, you know, cools the system and puts out any potential thermal events, and then that gas is vented to atmosphere from the top of the enclosure.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Carpenter? I do have a couple myself. How tall are these units?
That's a great question. So the photo that I showed you was actually a double-racked system, not a single-racked system. The height of these, the one that I showed you was about 12 feet. They are lower than that. This one was a specific application where we went a little bit higher because we're extremely land-constrained, and so we double-stacked racks. But, you know, it's going to vary based on the design. We have a lot more land in this, on this project where, you know, you don't want to go high if you don't need to because you can, you can, you know, just put shorter enclosures in. But the one that I showed you was about 12 feet.
So that's, the idea is to have 12 feet be essentially the highest building you're going to have out there as far as the BES system? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, that will need to be designed. And so there's reasons, if you, if you do turn out to be site-constrained, there's reasons to stack them higher than that. But if you think back to the picture that I showed you where there was a man standing in front of the racks, the batteries need to be loaded. And so, you know, the higher you go, the more complicated it is to load the batteries within those racking systems. And so from a construction efficiency perspective, there's a benefit to having it be shorter. But again, that's something that will be designed during, during the design process. So at this point, I can't tell you how high they're going to be, but it is, there is a benefit to having them be lower.
Okay. Do they produce noise?
That's a great question. So they, they, well, there's two ways that they produce noise. They do have HVAC on them. And so, you know, if you're walking behind a building with, with a large HVAC system, you'll hear the hum of the, of the air conditioning, right? So that is one noise that they produce. And then the PCS units have an electrical hum, like, you know, if you're, if you walk next to a transformer on a city corner, there's that sort of, a little bit of an electrical hum that you can hear. And so the PCS unit has a bit of a hum, and then there's HVAC. But otherwise, there's no noise. There's no other moving parts other than the fans that's in that HVAC system.
So that leads into my next question. What is the minimum distance between these BES units and a habitol structure?
That's typically defined by, you know, the county.
Sorry, Evelyn, I'm just going to, this is Christine. I'm going to address the commissioner, the commissioners. Based on the layout that you see before you, we're about two miles away from the nearest residence.
I'm not sure of what the entire, is blue, everything that is to be leased?
Blue is solar. Those are the solar panels. And then the pink is the storage facility. So it's about, you could see it's about two miles or more.
So I guess my question would be.
Oh, sorry, it's one mile.
If someone were to develop, coming from the south, or even from the east, could they build right next to the footprint of the BES?
If you allowed them to.
Why, I mean, is there any environmental reason that they could not?
Well, so first of all, the land that is immediately adjacent to the BES is Fieland land, currently being used for agriculture. I guess he would make the decision to put something there from an environmental perspective. Spencer, I don't know if you're on the phone, and you'd like to take that, or Evelyn, if you, if you'd like to take the environmental question of having, maybe Evelyn, it's, you could answer that question because I know you have been working on some battery storage sites in cities near, and I know one of our, our projects in Texas is, I could show you a picture, it's right next to other industrial facilities.
Okay.
Yeah. We, these are, these are being put in residential neighborhoods, in fact. And I just installed a fairly large project that was about equivalent size to what this project is asking for, and it was put in a residential neighborhood, and there were houses very close. And we put up a fence around it, you know, to, so that the neighbors didn't have to look at it, but it was literally next door. So they're not, and they, there were sound requirements on that, and we met all of the requirements. You know, it's that, it's a low-humming air conditioning noise. It's not a large mechanical noise. And so we were able to meet the required DB for the facility with, you know, with neighbors residing next door. So that hasn't been an issue in the projects that we've worked on so far.
And this is Spencer Martin, just with respect to this particular BES. It's currently over a mile from the nearest home versus the solar panels, which come to within about 570 feet of the nearest home. So there are setbacks there.
That was my question, is what if that land were to be used for, if somebody wanted to make a residential development in the future, how close could they get? And from what I'm hearing, they could be right up next to the property line. Another question. Conditional use permit today, talked about adding, adding capacity as the decreased charge set in for the, for the units. Would that require a separate, are we doing one conditional use permit for the, for the whole shebang, for how many years? Or we have to do an additional CUP in the future?
I guess I would say if they, if DynaSolar makes a substantial change to the original conditional use permit, if they were to expand the permit boundaries, then that would require a new conditional use permit. But unless it's, it's a substantial change or in violation of the conditions we place on either permit, I believe, I would say they can operate under the permits that we issue if approved on this one.
So I'm looking at this sheet right here with the units. Does that mean these additional units that had been talked about, are they going to be put in the same area to supplement what they're here today to apply for?
25 acres.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If it's outside the boundaries of the 25 acres or the 3, 3,500 acres, then they would need a new permit.
Okay. And I'm going to go ahead and ask you, just because, this is a staff question. I'm assuming Town of Barnon has looked at this?
They were, we communicated this information to them, yes.
And no reply?
We received no public comment, I don't believe. Holly, did we receive any phone calls on this? No public comment.
And that's their growth boundary, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Ms. Carpenter, did you have more for us?
Uh, no, that's it.
Does the applicant have anything more to present to us before we move into a public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I'd just like to say again that we did meet with the fire marshal. I know he was going to reach out to Justin. I don't know if he did that, but it seemed to be that his main concerns were, is there a mechanism by which I can come in and I can disconnect from the system? And there is that mechanism that we will be working closely with them. We'll be meeting all the fire codes. And I believe from the meeting that I had with him, I feel like he felt comfortable. I don't want to speak for him, but I don't, I know that he was going to reach out to Justin and share with him what he learned today.
And we did not receive any feedback negative from the Town of Barnon or the fire department or any other agencies.
I think his main, his main concern was tumbleweed and ensuring that we would clean up the tumbleweed. And I expressed that if that was some interest of his, that we'd be happy to include something like that in our, you know, condition of our permit. We're happy to, obviously, it's windy. We understand the fire hazards out there, and we understand that the Town of Barnon, the last fire was very close, so we want to be very accommodating. I just want to express my support for that. Thank you.
Ms. Michael, one question. So I did notice on the plan, he showed two different roadways going into the BES system.
While we have.
So with fire, suppose we have a wild, wild, wildland fire. That was taken up with the fire folks as well? That's adequate?
So that's a great question. So we have the access road into the site. We have a perimeter road around the entire site. I believe it's 25 feet. It's gravel appropriate for fire trucks. And then you can see on the map, there's east-to-west lines. Those are also roads. So he felt comfortable that no matter where he was in the layout of the solar and the BES, he can have his hose and get it to where it goes. Because just imagine it's, it's maybe easier if you may, if I may.
Sure.
So each of these lines here are roads, and then there's a road around. So you can get virtually to anywhere.
So there's a road on the boundary of?
And then in between, where you see these Ps, there's roads all there. And Shane, you could probably speak better to that. But there's, there's significant roadways to get in and around the system.
Is there only one roadway into the battery storage site?
Well, there's one access road that can get you to everywhere.
I think the fire problem would be pretty much isolated to the batteries. That would be.
Right, and that's, you're very close, you're a mile.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'm sorry he wasn't able to make it tonight. He mentioned he might try to make it, but.
I do have one more question. How old is this technology?
Evelyn, do you want to speak to the maturity of the technology?
So the lithium-ion batteries have been around, you know, quite a while. In the large-scale industrial applications, we've been installing them in this kind of configuration for probably about five years. You know, every year is a bit more. So the industry is, has, even in the last year or two, has installed a lot of technology. But the technology is pretty well-understood. When we were talking to, you know, the fire marshal, he's very familiar with it from, you know, electric vehicles, right? Because it's a very similar technology. And so the technology itself is, we're using an application that's a little bit different, but it's the same technology that, you know, you have in your cell phone batteries and EVs and all of those types of things. So it's just a different method of deployment.
What's your most unfortunate situation you've had in those five years with this technology? technology?
Say, I didn't hear the first part of that question.
What's the most unfortunate, or what's the most cataclysmic, if any, event you've had with this technology in, in the five years that it's been in place?
Um, so there, there have been a couple of things in the news, I can't speak to what we've done, because there, there hasn't been any, but there's, there's been a couple of things in the news about thermal runaway events in facilities. If you go back and you look at that, it's, the way that we design these systems, every single enclosure has its own fire mitigation system to it. And so, what, what would happen if something does happen is, one enclosure out of 46, you know, burns. But it's not spreading to the rest of the facility, because the, again, each one has its own system. And so, you know, if there's an event, it's very isolated, and they're designed to be that way. And so, each of these enclosures is instrumented, it's monitored, and it has its own system. And so, you know, just because there's a problem with a system, you know, one of the enclosures, the, the whole design is intended not to spread it to the next enclosure. And that, that's been very successful. So we haven't seen it propagate, where we have seen something happen.
Any spark, anything that produces sparks, that could be caught in the wind and sent down, downwind?
Yeah, not any different than a substation, right? There's, these systems are charging and discharging, there's an inverter and a transformer, this is all equipment that's in, and, you know, in a substation, right? And so, it's, there's, there's nothing that's like, that's producing sparks or has an open flame, but it is electrical equipment. And so, you know, there's lightning protection, there's all those types of things that you would see in a, in a regular substation that's installed.
I guess I'd defer to the Fire Department's review of that, but I guess that would be a concern of mine, particularly the way the wind blows and the experience we've had with wildland fires getting out of control in a hurry.
Yeah. And he, his, one of his primary concerns that we talked through was that if they need to go in and address the fire, they need to be able to isolate the enclosures and make sure that they're not charging or discharging. And so, there is a emergency stop switch on these, where you can isolate a particular enclosure. There's also an emergency stop on that, the PCF unit, which is the electrical unit with the inverter on it. Those both have emergency stops on them, and so, you can very quickly isolate the enclosure to make sure that you can then safely address it.
I guess I might just add, because we're all capitalists, the cost, the numbers that I showed you in terms of the property tax base, the reason why those numbers are so high are because these storage facilities are so expensive. So we are going to do everything we can to make sure, that's why Evelyn talked about each enclosure is, is going to have either chemical or water to them, because we can't afford to lose one of those whole systems. So, the best part of being a capitalist is also that it's better for you because of it's, it's a safety issue. We're not gonna let that happen. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that these facilities are very expensive, and we'll do everything we can to make sure nothing happens to them. And, and our power purchase agreement has provisions in it that if we are not operating as we say we're going to, we will also face penalties. So it's a penalty on a penalty on a penalty.
I guess my concern is if, if there were some unfortunate event that was not anticipated, that fire would be on Barnon in no time, the way the wind blows around here, so.
Well, I mean, can you go back to the enclosure, we just talk about the fact that it's, the batteries are encased in steel. And as, as Evelyn talked about, you have, you have a substation, the Barnon substation, and you have the Casper substation, which are much larger than anything that we'll have here, so.
The, I had a question, the fire suppression system, is that tied to an alarm center that lets the Fire Department know?
Evelyn, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so each of the enclosures, and it's a pretty sophisticated system, so each of the enclosures themselves are alarmed, and then they alarm back to a central alarm. These facilities are monitored 24/7 by an off-site facility, and so, if there's an alarm, the 24/7 desk will see that, and they will be able to say, is it fire, and they'll be able to do some detection, and, and rule out any, any false alarms, or, you know, misalarming. And then, the master panel, if there is a fire, the, the enclosure level notifies the master level panel, and then the Fire Department will be called. So if it's actually verified that there is an event, the 24/7 desk that's monitoring can call the Fire Department.
And I, and the fire marshal told us it was about, I think, 10 minutes to get to the Barnon fire that was to the north, and we're a couple miles to the south. So, just to give you a sense of the time. Evelyn, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And, yeah, no problem. And to clarify, so there have been some, like Tesla car fires that have been in the news. So, the difference between that technology and our technology is that the vehicles do not have this thermal runaway mitigation system built into them. And so, if you hear about some of, like, the dramatic Tesla fires that actually are starting a fire, that is because they don't have the system that prevents it from running away. So, the lithium ion battery thermal runaway is something that you could see in the news, like, on the Tesla vehicles, but we have a system that's built in to prevent that. And so, the, the scenario is that if there's a single battery cell that's overheating, this thermal runaway system controls it right there, and it may inject water, which could destroy some of the sensitive electronics, but it's not propagating to the rest of the enclosure, or the enclosure next door. So you're not seeing flames coming out of the enclosure, because it's enclosed, it's contained within that enclosure. And that's a little bit different than, like, a Tesla example.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant, before we start the public hearing? Seeing none. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call a public hearing for consideration of conditional use permit 22-02, and that's the DynaSolar Battery Energy Storage System Conditional Use Request. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor, please approach the podium.
Good evening. Andrew Schneider, 8711 Everett Lane.
Yes, sir.
Here, and happy to support these exciting battery systems, new technology, keeping Wyoming current and relevant in our energy future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the conditional use permit for the BES, please come forward? Second call, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Any questions, any discussion from Planning and Zoning Commission? Yes, Jason?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would add, I mean, the applicant has met with the Netrona County Fire Marshal. I would like to add, maybe as a planning consideration, that we have the Fire Marshal's written comments before this moves forward to the BOCC. I wonder, during the notification process, I mean, we notify Barnon, because Barnon has a volunteer Fire Department, I wonder if they're looped into this, and if they'd have any concerns.
Great points.
We will be sure to get written comments from the Fire Marshal, and all of the Town of Barnon write us something for the file that they've reviewed the application.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I guess I would throw in my two cents, and it's not necessarily an attachment to a potential motion to approve, but the previous discussion, I think at least should show up in the minutes, that at least I, for one, believe that this technology should pay toward the development of West Winds Boulevard as it traverses through the property. Okay, any other discussion, and if not, Chair would entertain a motion for consideration.
No, I, I was gonna, motion that we, I don't remember that. I would, I move that we approve-
Oh, can we make sure everybody has a mic?
I would like to move that we approve the conditional use permit 2022-00, 002? What was the number?
2202C.
22.02CUP.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a, it's been moved, and there's a second for approval. Any further discussion?
Are we gonna amend it to say, to have written comments from the, from the Fire Marshal, as well as the Barnon, just have them attached, their written comments to the-
I guess I can, I've worded it to add a consideration, that written comments from the Fire Marshal and Town of Barnon are received, but I can just say are attached to the approved resolution language, something like that.
That meets your approval. Robert?
And that, just to be clear, Megan, that would be maybe like number four and five of the permit conditions?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Before we, before we move into that, the applicant, do you guys have anything else? Is there any rebuttal that I've missed, or any opportunity you, you wish to wrap things up here before we take our vote?
Mr. Chair and Members of the Commission, I'd like to take the first hour of my closing to discuss-
We got a place for you next door.
No, sir, we do not. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to the staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshal. All right, with that, all those in favor of approval of conditional use permit 22-02, and that's the DynaSolar BES system, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The way I see it, there's a unanimous approval of the application from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't know the date, but it goes on from here to the Board of County Commissioners. Megan, do you know when that, that happens?
This will be heard before the Board of Commissioners on July 5th.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next on the agenda, does anybody need to take a break before we finish the list, just go ahead and plow through it? So next on the agenda is the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, Old Business, Recommendations of Updates and Amendments to the Board of County Commissioners. Do we have staff report, please? So, we need to-
Thank you, Jason. There, thank you. Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board, I do have a staff memo for you, and I apologize, I was made aware that last night, or yesterday evening, when we, I sent out this updated memo, I attached the wrong memo. So, I have an updated one for you this evening. At the May 10th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the Commission tabled the proposed amendments to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan in order to provide more time for community engagement and public review and comment. Since that meeting, staff has worked to present the plan to numerous stakeholders within the community and put on a public outreach campaign. In response to concern, Commission concerns regarding public outreach, staff developed a press release plan summary, which was included in your packet, that provided, was provided to media outlets, as well as distributed to stakeholders. It provided a brief history of the plan, the need for updates, and specific data on the public input that was received during the plan development process. Staff, staff also set up an information station in the lobby of the courthouse to provide an overview of the plan update, and ensure any interested person could review the plan and comment. We did put, Logan Simpson put the plan back up on their comment website, so it was very easy to use, you just get on there and click anywhere on the plan, and could type your comment, so we could easily see which section it related to. A summary of those comments are included in your packet, and since the meeting on the May 10th, we received additional comments on the plan from five individuals, and we had 169 views of the document. Again, the comments received were included in the attached table in your packet. And upon review of the additional comments by staff and the consultant team, it was noted that many were use-specific and are more appropriate, will be more appropriately addressed in the zoning resolution rewrite, and therefore, no changes have been made to the plan, which was presented to you at the May 10th meeting. Finally, staff and the consultant team have worked to address comments and concerns raised by the Commission at the May 10th meeting, and I included responses to those in this memo. The first one was related to campgrounds, C cans or outbuilding construction addressed in the plan, and that, we said, no, this plan's not intended to set specific rules on uses or create definitions, the plan is intended to outline the community vision for Casper Mountain, limits on the use of C cans or definitions and development standards for campgrounds or other uses would be included in the zoning resolution. Our agriculture uses, such as grazing and commercial agriculture, addressed in the plan. There are a few places in the plan that they were, on page 53, in the Resource Preservation Section, Policy Number Five, states, "We want to support ranching and agriculture as viable land uses that contribute to open space, views, and wildlife habitat." In the Land Use Section, in the Land Use Categories, we note that rural, in the rural category, that light agriculture and as appropriate use in rural areas of the mountain. In the inventory analysis, we state that the MR1 district was established to protect areas for low-density residential and accessory agricultural uses. It also notes that some areas of the mountains are, of the mountain are zoned urban ag and ram, both are, which both are used for agriculture and commercial ranching and agriculture purposes. And the zoning resolution will be where specific district uses are regulated. The plan notes that ranching and agriculture are important land uses on the mountain, and in turn, those statements within the plan would guide their inclusion within the zoning resolution. Was the plan sent for review by specific agencies? Casper Mountain Fire, yes, it was sent to Chief Lisa Evers. Netrona County Parks, it was reviewed by Director Michael Brown. The City of Casper provided comments via their planner, Craig Collins, and it was sent to Samantha Nelson at the BLM, and Philip Giffen with the, with YDOT. In the Resource Preservation Section, Policy Number One is to use zoning controls, land purchases, and trades to protect unique natural resources on the mountain. This is merely a suggested apology or man, policy or management practice that could be utilized to help protect natural resources on the mountain. In the Implementation Section, funding and financing options are discussed, and once, again, the plan's a vision for the future of the mountain. And while not all the reference financing options would be viable for all projects, the plan is acknowledging that some of the action items identified would require funding. The section is merely listing potential sources of funding that could be considered to realistically achieve the goals of the plan. Terms like, terms such as low density for residential uses are discussed within the plan, but are they defined? The official definition for any term will not be placed into a land use plan. All definitions will be contained within the zoning resolution. The plan is discussing types of development, excuse me, currently seen on the mountain, while incorporating feedback from the public for the plan update to describe what the vision for residential development is on the mountain. And from that vision, the county will adopt rules with definitions and standards for low-density residential and other terms within the regulations. And finally, there's a question about the list of roads in the appendix and public maintenance of roads. And the list of roads was meant to be a convenience and reference to the associated map to identify locations on the mountain. It does not imply or assign any specific entity to maintain any road on the mountain. And there are also many policy statements throughout the document with regard to public access, establishment, and maintenance of roads. And so, again, I apologize for not sending the correct memo to you all yesterday evening. I am, I hope that that provides more information to you all, to the Commission and the public, with regards to those issues that were brought up. Again, the plan has been up on the county website for, since that meeting. Again, the plan has been up on the county website for, since that meeting and prior to the meeting for comment by the public, and with that, staff would still recommend that the Planning Commission approve the amendments to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan and forward the plan with a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for adoption. And I can answer any questions you may have, and I believe there are people in the audience to give you feedback as well.
Any question for staff? Jason?
Just from a, a process point of view, you said this would be forwarded to the county commissioners, does that initiate the rulemaking process where then there's more public advertisement? Or kind of walk me through the process?
I'll defer to Attorney Eric.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gutierrez, this is not a, a formal rulemaking, so to speak. Section eighteen-five-two-oh-two-B lays out the process for certifying a, a plan, and so before certifying its plan or amendments there to, to the board, this commission shall hold at least one public hearing. A notice of the time and place of the hearing shall be given by one publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the county at least thirty days before the day of hearing. So, there is not a formal forty-five day comment period required for a plan adoption or amendment, whereas zoning would require that. So, so if this commission forwards, certifies and forwards it to the Board of County Commissioners, then it would be set, most likely, I would, I guess, in July for another public hearing and, and a vote for, for final action by the commissioners.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, so I guess we launch right into the public hearing.
Sorry, I forgot to introduce Melissa Ruth with our consultant team at Logan Simpson. She also has a short presentation for you all prior to any public comments.
So disregard that I just hit that gavel, I just dropped it.
Alrighty, Melissa Ruth with Logan Simpson, 2659 Devil's Tower Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Thank you all for having me here, I won't take too much of your time, but I wanted to walk through some of the public engagement and the history of kind of how we got here. So Holly, you can go to the next slide. So, this slide should look familiar, you've seen it before. The initial reasons for updating the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, so the Natrona next stepping, or stepping forward process is the zoning resolution update process that we embarked on about a year and a half ago. Through the initial stakeholder interviews for that process, what we heard was that the MR1 and 2 zone districts were not working for people, both use-wise, standard-wise, lot size-wise, setbacks, kind of everything about them was, was difficult for people. And what we have to do, looking at the zoning resolution, is tie that back to a land use plan. So the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan is that guiding document for those two zone districts. What we found was the MR1 and 2 zone districts as written are in conformance with the land use plan, meaning that the issue doesn't lie with the zone districts, it lies with the land use plan, hence the update for the land use plan. And what we specifically heard was a need to identify the desired future character for the area, especially the impact on septic and water systems. So those were kind of the two things that we looked at, as well as the overall land uses on the mountain. Process started in November, or sorry, September, with initial public kickoff with you all, and then the Board of County Commissioners. We also hosted a public open house and a questionnaire, and then did kind of an existing conditions review, internal audit. In, through December through February, we drafted the plan and held, held a second open house and kind of second online questionnaire with the plan draft out. And then March through June, which is where we are now, is the draft plan review meetings with P and Z and Board of County Commissioners, looking through final adoption, or final plan development and adoption hearings. I do want to add, this was our initial schedule, we had three public engagement opportunities. We added a fourth one based off of the initial feedback from you all and from the Mountain Land Owners Association to provide kind of a second opportunity. So we did in October host the public open house as well as kind of a listening session. I know that was on a unfortunately snowy and kind of difficult night, but we did provide opportunity for people to provide comment then, and then I know staff did field multiple calls and emails about the plan, as I did as well. So Phase One, this was the Planning Commission meeting with you all, September 14th, we had six attendees that spoke and provided public comment. October 12th, we did the listening session with ten attendees. Our first open house was then a following week on the 20th with twenty-five attendees based off of our sign-in sheet. We had a questionnaire that was open from that open house through November 12th, we received forty-five questionnaire responses and an additional like twenty or so partial responses that were not included. And then we did have a big ideas wall open, where we allowed people to provide just general comment, feedback on things they wanted to see addressed through the plan. The questionnaire were the same questions that we, and boards we had at the open house, so we provided the same opportunity for people to provide comment, both in person and then online. That open house was held at the mountain, at the Hogodon Ski Area, and focused on reviewing the 2004 goals and policies, and generally identifying which policies need to be refined. So we had all the policies up in big letters for people to look at, help us kind of work through those, and what we found from that was that the policies were generally pretty good, people were generally happy with the policies, and they just needed a little bit of tweaking. For Phase Two, we did the open house on February 16th, and again, twenty-five attendees, most of the same ones, but we did see some, a little bit of a difference in some additional people that came, based off of our sign-in sheet. And then on, the plan was available online for draft comment following that meeting through March 7th. We received fifty-one online comments from eleven individuals, and I fielded dozens of phone calls, and I know staff did as well, phone calls, emails, people in person. The plan was available on the same website that it is available now on, where people can just provide comment directly on the draft, they can see the full document, including all the appendices. And then Phase Three is where we are now, so we had the Planning Commission hearing on March 10th with five attendees that provided public comment, and then the draft plan went up, went back up on the website, we had taken it down about two days before the Planning Commission hearing to compile all the comments. It went back up following that meeting on the 12th and is still actually up on the website right now. As I checked this morning, we had a hundred and forty-six page views, twenty-one online comments from four individuals, so an additional twenty-one comments, and as Megan mentioned, lots of these were specifically related to uses or kind of minor text edits, which are things that we can definitely make those edits for, but we didn't see any substantial changes to goals or policies. There were a few policy edits, but nothing that was, or that we felt was substantial between the consultant team and staff. Quick review of the changes that were made to, or the updates made it, made to the plan. We updated the future land use map with a smaller commercial area and a greater description of the residential and rural areas. Currently, the, the zone, or the commercial land use on the mountain's pretty large, what we heard from feedback was to make that smaller and limit it to specifically kind of the Hogodon area and where commercial uses existed, that's what we did, and we redefined those residential and rural, rural areas to be more specific and indicative of what is currently on the mountain right now. We revised the future land use categories to tailor to mountain-specific uses, so looked at more of a targeted resort commercial to support that Hogodon land use, which is considered a resort, rather than a general commercial area. So you're shrinking kind of the number of uses that are allowed on that mountain, really targeting it to what makes sense on the mountain. Updated the existing conditions information, this was the bulk of what we did, as you'll see kind of in the plan, there was a lot of information in the plan that was not necessarily appropriate for a land use plan, whole soil surveys that are, are great information, but not necessarily helpful for the planning process. And then we reconfirmed the goals and policies to the community with minor changes. As I said, we didn't, we didn't receive feedback from the community that the whole plan needed to change. What we heard was that there were specific targeted updates, and that's what we did, and if you look, kind of compare the two plans, you'll see that the goals and policies are pretty similar, just a couple minor edits to be a little bit more specific, specifically to the policies in the residential and commercial areas. This is the 2004 Proposed Land Use Plan, so this is what's currently in the plan. I wanted to walk through a little bit of the difference between future land use and zoning, because they are different. So this is the Proposed Land Use Plan from the 2004 plan. You'll see in red, those are the commercial areas, the bright red. The kind of light green is what's considered ranching in the current plan, and then green and tan-red-ish are the current residential areas. Again, these are not specific uses, that they're general land use categories, a residential land use can incorporate really anything from ag land all the way through residential land. The ranching is specifically tied to ranching, and then there are a few things on this Proposed Land Use Plan that are not typically included in a land use plan, and those are the gravel pit and the communication towers, which you'll see in the purple, they're kind of hard to see, as well as the fire break. Those things aren't necessarily usually included in a land use plan, so those were removed, and Holly, you can go to the next one. And looking at that, this is what the current proposed zoning for the 2004 plan is, so you'll see some differences between what was considered ranching in the land use plan and what is zoned UA and RAM. So a specific land use category does not equate to a specific zoning category, there's usually multiple zoning districts that can fall within a single land use category. And that's where you look at the specific kind of densities, acreages of specific lots, and then the use standards. So I just wanted to point this out, and then go to the next one, Holly. This is the 2022 Proposed Land Use Plan, so you'll see a smaller commercial area enlisted specifically as resort commercial, to clarify a difference between kind of the rest of the county's commercial area and what's expected here on the mountain. We added in a parks and recreation to note specifically what the parks are in the mountain. That residential shrunk to what is currently shown as residential and subdivided in the, on the mountain, as five acres or less, that's what that boundary kind of looks like. And then the rural and park, public, public lands and conservation easements are kind of the breakdown between what's currently shown as rural and ranching, to be a little bit more specific as to what's currently out there. These are not specific boundaries, so they're not intended to be parcel level boundaries, just because someone is shown currently here as a residential use doesn't mean that they couldn't, they may not fall in, you know, an MR or a RAM zone district. These are supposed to be kind of blobby boundaries that are used as policymaking, not a specific regulation. So again, you know, the, the residential zone, or residential land use could fall under any of the existing residential zone districts. In the county, that is a discussion that we would like to have following the line, the land use plan adoption, looking at the mountain and the zoning on the mountain, but that is part of the zone, zoning rewrite not part of the land use plan. I think there's two more. So I've kind of walked through this already, but the rural zone district, or the rural land use category, is grazing lands allowing for buildings and uses in support of ranching and very low-density residential uses. There's a recommended minimum lot size, that's not a requirement though, that's just kind of a general recommendation, with some very, with some kind of generally identified uses as very low-density residential accessory structures, home occupation, light ag, and open space and recreation facilities. Looking at the residential land use, the intention is for residential development ranging in size from under a quarter acre to ten acres, those are currently the lot sizes that are on the mountain right now. You have some pretty small lots, but you also have up to ten acres on the mountain in this current land use category. densities are intended to be less than one unit per five acres as terrain allows and clustering is encouraged, and that just means voluntary clustering by lot owners to kind of cluster development near each other and conserve open space. Uses are looking at limit, very limited commercial development, recreational vehicles, eating and drinking establishments, general stores, and campgrounds as a conditional use. These are all things that are currently on the mountain right now and encompassed within that residential land use. For the resort commercial, limited to the vicinity use of the Hogodon Ski Area and the existing state lease area, with uses intended to be the restaurants, grocery stores, recreational support uses at Hogodon, including short-term rentals and lodging. Public lands and conservation, these are lands that are currently under, either public lands or under existing conservation easement, with the intention of recreation, forest management, wildlife protection, water resources, and grazing. There is no intention for residential and commercial development. And then parks and recreation are again, your existing parks and active recreation land. I don't think we need to talk about this one, I think I've already gone through it. But if you approve tonight, the next step is the Board of County Commissioners hearing, and then following the adoption of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan, the MR1 and 2 zone district updates and any other updates for the zoning resolution related to this plan. So I'll stand for any questions. I know that was a lot.
So, any questions from, from Ms. Ruth? Jason?
On the commercial side of things, so as we go back to that blob map where we just talked about blobs of commercial, then that will guide the discussion in the zoning down the road, what areas, what, where we might have commercial zoning or commercial uses on the mountain?
Would that include camping, Jason? Is that what you're speaking of also?
Yeah, just any commercial, commercial uses, so if we talk about zoning, so what if we approve this, this plan, and then we get to the zoning rewrite and we're talking about commercial uses allowed on the mountain, this plan then would guide us that only on those two red areas was where we would have commercial uses?
Correct, and it is a separate discussion. Again, following the, the approval and the adoption of this plan, the specific zone districts on the mountain would be a kind of separate discussion that we would like to have with stakeholders and then with staff as well. What is currently allowed on the mountain is a greater amount of commercial uses and wider variety through a larger area. So this looks to shrink that, and really, we took the feedback from the stakeholders, we had a, we had a large map on a table, and they redrew the boundary that we had based off the current plan and shrunk it significantly based off of topography and what's really feasible out there. You all know how steep it is out there, so we tried to limit those resort commercial areas to what's currently a commercial use, and then what is kind of feasible based off of slopes and topog, topography, but again, not intended to be specific parcel boundaries, more of kind of areas to look at.
So those two red areas, I might add, the, the one to the right, is that, is that near that restaurant as your, the, it's closed, current restaurant, right at the top of the hill? And then the one to the left, is that Hogodon? That's Hogodon area?
Correct.
So, and Mr. Chairman and Board, this plan and the discussion and the feedback we've gotten as we've developed it, well, is Jason's question and Melissa led to, so now that we know what people want to see, they don't want to see such a wide variety of commercial on the mountain, they've said, they want to see more tailored uses to what's, you know, this lodging, support commercial. So then, when somebody comes in and says, I want to, so then we're going to inform our zoning districts in our plan, in our new regulations, maybe we come up with a resort commercial district that we're going to use only on the mountain, and so if somebody comes in and says, I want to rezone to this resort commercial, then they'll have a hearing with you all and the BOCC, and we'll reference the plan and our map and say, you know, is this where we said we want to see this type of zoning district? Is this appropriate use for this type of property? Or even if somebody doesn't want to rezone and comes in and says, I want to do a campground, and if we, in the new rules, say campgrounds can only be in resort lodging, we'll say, no, we need to rezone or, and move them through the process that way. But until we get this plan adopted, Logan Simpson can't make any changes to the zoning regulations because they don't have a basis for why we're making that rule. When we adopt a rule, we say, we're adopting this rule because our plan says we want, and this rule will lead us to, or our plan says we want to see. Does that make sense?
Little bit. So camping only in the red area with?
And not, and not necessarily.
Without, without special process that you're talking about?
That depends on how the, again, the zone districts shake out. We specifically did not mention camping within this land use plan very much because we know it's a hot and difficult topic, but it's really a zoning-related issue and not a land use-specific issue.
So are we saying camping?
So are we saying camping falls under commercial? Wouldn't that be recreation?
Those are, I think those are things that we need to shake out in the definitions of our zoning rules and possibly, you know, in developing development standards for campgrounds. You know, where do we want to allow campgrounds? I mean, is camping, if I go camp in a tent in my backyard, that's recreation. But if I charge you to come camp out in my backyard and you pay me money, you know...
Or are we saying private campgrounds, not county-funded campgrounds?
So that'll all be things that we develop in the definitions of the zoning rules. We don't want to get down to those specific levels within the plan. Think of this plan as, this is the vision the community has for the mountain, so we say what we want to see and then our rules will take us there.
Question, would bed and breakfast, would that be considered commercial as well?
I would say probably.
So...
That's the way your regulations are currently written. And within the draft of the new use table of the zoning resolution, that's where they stand as commercial.
Commercial, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, so, what I understand is that this stays the same? That 2004 zoning or any progress changes?
We are not changing our zoning map, no.
So what you're saying is that you would then at some point revise this? And so this might look a little bit more complicated?
Or less complicated, you know, there's been discussion, I've heard that MR-1 goes too far down the mountain, that there's properties that are not, clearly not on the mountain, that should not be zoned MR-1, that maybe should be zoned UA or RAM or something. But that would be an action the county needs to take, have a hearing through you all, go to the B O C C, provide notification that, "Hey, we're rezoning your property." The land use map is just meant to say, "Hey, this is where we want to see a new park and this is where we want to see commercial happen, this is where we want to see new subdivisions."
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I don't know if this will help clarify it, but hopefully, just wanted to talk a little bit about the legal requirement for counties to adopt land use plans. And so we have a countywide land use plan that we've adopted and the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan is a sub-part of that. And that's required by statute section 9-8-301, where statute says, "All local governments," and that includes counties, "shall develop a local land use plan within their jurisdiction." And it's defined as "any written statement of land use policies, visions, goals, and objectives adopted by local governments." "These land use plans shall provide an explanation of the methods for implementation of the plan. However, these plans shall not require any provisions for zoning. And implementation of the plan shall be subject to the provisions of this article." So the statute goes on, and I won't read a lot of it, but it's very clear that planning is distinct from zoning and planning is a visionary document. A land use plan is a visionary document stating kind of broad objectives, but does not carry the weight of law. And that was very recently affirmed by the Wyoming Supreme Court in a case that came out in February of 2021, Asphalt Specialties versus Laramie County Planning Commission. And there, the Supreme Court notes, "The legislature has mandated that each county adopt a countywide or comprehensive land use plan, statutorily defined as any written statement of land use policies, goals, and objectives." And it goes on to say that "a comprehensive plan is generally a prerequisite for the adoption of zoning resolutions." And in this case, Laramie County attempted to prohibit a quarry from existing based on their land use plan. And the Supreme Court was very clear that it carried no weight of law, that this was just a planning instrument. And so I don't know if that's helpful, but I want to at least put that out on the record, that this is really like the prerequisite then to the next step, which would be the zoning rewrite and then the potential rezoning of the mountain. That is helpful.
Jason? Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, when I brought up the resort commercial, a lot of times when folks think of the Casper Mountain area, they don't realize that this plan area encompasses clear from 220 all the way to Hat 6. And when I think about along 220, there's a lot of fishing and bed and breakfast resort-type uses over there. So my suggestion maybe would be to have some idea for some red blob along 220 where we have a lot of fishing industry. And then conversely, at the other end of it, we think of Hat 6. I can't think of one off the top of my head, but perhaps there's some better breakfast or some commercial-type resort-y stuff happening over there. Just a thought, a lot of times those residents that live at those far extremes don't necessarily include themselves in the Casper Mountain and they're part of the plan.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Gutierrez, I'd say that's a great point, the fishing. I didn't think about that, and I've actually had a few calls since I started about buying some homes and having, and we've had dealings with the fishing expedition companies. So I think that's good input on maybe modifying the future land use map a little bit. Definitely along 220 and never know, maybe we could have Yak Tours or something off Hat 6 one day. So possibly on the east end as well.
So any other comments, requests, discussion with Ms. Ruth or her staff? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, want to move into the public hearing component? This is for real. I'd like to open the public hearing for consideration of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan. And we'll start with anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the plan. Would you please come forward? Mr. Snyder?
Good evening, Andrew Snyder, 8711 Everett Lane. I don't want to get a reputation for always being Pollyanna and positive, but, you know, I think that this plan has benefited from a lot of public input. I think you've had hundreds of people look at it without choosing to comment. I think everyone has had ample opportunity to engage directly. Every reasonable outreach effort has been made. And having worked on a number of municipal planning processes in all kinds of capacities throughout the last decade or 15 years of my life, I could tell you that we could just keep, we could meet every month about this and find new things to wordsmith and think about. But I guess my question would be, what is the cost of extending our contract with the consultants based on tabling it last month? And how much are we willing to see that change order price tag from a contractor coming in for us to keep doing this? So, you know, in some of those March meetings, we talked about maybe that steering committee starts meeting after the plan is adopted and that we continue to have community engagement. So we do keep community dialogue going to help support the planning and zoning staff as they go into zoning and do those kinds of things. But I would just support you all moving this on to the next step of the process and honoring the folks who did put significant hours into showing up at the appointments that you made and putting our lives at risk, some of us to come down in a blizzard to give you that feedback. So, thank you.
And you're among the folks that's put in an extraordinary amount of time seeing this through, so thank you very much for that.
My pleasure, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan preparation? Please come forward. Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan? Would you please come forward? Mr. Hawke?
My name is Doug Haupt, I live at 3317 Garden Creek Heights. I'm not really here to speak in opposition to it. I'm not really here to speak for it or against it. I just understand that it was tabled last time and my understanding was they were going to put a committee of people together and discuss things and assess things, but I haven't heard anything about it. I have, my background is I have a large investment in the area. I own approximately 2,000 acres of nature conservatory in this area. I own approximately 3,000 acres of regular deeded land in this area. I pretty much control Wolf Creek, Squaw Creek, West Garden Creek, and Allen Creek. I mean, I make sure it's kept clean and not disturbed. So I have a large investment in what we're talking about. I also pay taxes on a home in the area and on my land and on three cabins. So I also have a stake into that. My main question, and I appreciate everybody's efforts, everybody sitting here's efforts, but I just want to know how it's going to affect me. And that's what I've been trying to find out for a year. If, what changes are made? We should be able to have a list of saying the 2004 zoning versus the 2022 zoning. What are we changing? That's what I want to know, and I haven't heard it at all yet. And there was five or six other people at the last meeting that want the same thing, that apparently they don't even know about this meeting or they'd have been here. So, like I said, I appreciate everybody's efforts. The main thing that I, the only thing I really wanted to address was how it's going to affect me as far as what we're changing, if we were doing anything with the campers, because that was a major thing that we were involved with a couple of years ago, whether or not we were going to allow campers just to go on a 10-acre parcel and park five campers on there and without any sewage disposal, without any water. And I would like to see water brought up on top of the mountain, and this might be for the zoning later, and you guys can inform me of that if you need to. But I wanted to know if we addressed anything about campers, if we addressed anything about water and sewer and besides in the campgrounds. And I think it would be a great idea to have a water fill station on the mountain and a sewage dump station on the mountain. And if you can tell me how it's going to affect me from the old plan, which I was involved with, to what we're changing today. And if there's no effect, then I'm fine and I support it 100%.
So defer to staff and possibly to Logan Simpson for Mr. Haupt's questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll jump in just first and staff can correct me. So I think as far as how the changes will affect you, my understanding is it's really an updated plan and there haven't been any wholesale changes. It's pretty targeted, as Melissa said. And so I, as I read it and compared it, I don't see any major effects or any major changes in the land use plan itself that would affect you. Secondly, I think your questions on campers and camping and those types of things and with the 2022 zoning versus the 2004, none of the zoning is changing with this land use plan. And so that work is yet to come. And so I think those questions are going to be answered during the work that will commence after this is, and not really commence because we're working on the zoning rewrite, but those specific items on the mountain are yet to be determined. And so, you know, I would certainly, if you're passionate and have an interest in that, then please connect with staff and be part of that process going forward because we do want additional input from the public. And that's where I think you're going to see the specific changes incorporated into the zoning code that are going to have the force and effect of law and are going to be controlling on the uses on the mountain. So correct me if I misspoke.
No, Mr. Chairman, Board, and I think County Attorney Nelson summed it up right. Nothing is changing that will affect your property with the plan. We've updated the goals that you all worked on in 2004. We thought the 2004 was, plan was really, you know, really good, lots of information, a great basis for a place to start with the plan. We just wanted to look at it and update it for what's happening now and what's, you know, what people want to see for the future. But we're not changing anyone's zoning and we haven't made any determination of, yeah, are we going to allow five people to camp? Are we not? That's all yet to come when we make new rules with the zoning rewrite.
And when will that take place?
So before the end of the year. So we're planning to have another open house with the zoning rewrite in July? Or late July, early August. So I'll be sure to get your contact information so we can definitely, like, directly let you know, but we'll get that out there on social media and the website and the newspaper and the radio so that everybody can come and give us their feedback and take a look at it. But it'll be before the end of the year.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. That's just what I needed to know. You guys have a great evening.
I got a question, Doug.
You bet.
You said you had a conservation easement up there of how many acres?
2,000.
Is that through the game of fish or is that a federal deal?
It's a federal deal. It's a private deal.
That should be highlighted on this map because that's kind of untouchable.
Yeah, it is untouchable.
It doesn't need to be highlighted on this map.
And it is, it's the dark green, it's public lands and conservation easements.
So is that more than one person? Is that more than just his?
Correct, or any public lands because we're not going to...
Well, conservation easement doesn't make it public land.
No, but in terms of future development, we're not going to see somebody coming in and doing a subdivision on public land owned by the V L M or lands that have conservation easements on them. Because the conservation easement will outlive his ownership of the property, the next person, the next person, forever.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's forever and there can be no development, there can be no logging. It's mainly for eagles is what it's for.
Well, protective.
Yep, yep, yep. There's no snowmobiling, all that kind of stuff.
This is for development.
So, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haupt. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to? By the way, Mr. Haupt, I clearly heard him say he was not pro or con. This is, just had a couple of questions.
I just appreciate all your efforts.
All right. So anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan as presented? Please come forward. One more try. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan? Please come forward. Seeing none, call the public hearing closed. And gentlemen, further discussion? Questions? Mr. Mitchell?
I think I've heard that when the zoning rewrite comes up, they've got to make extra effort to make sure that people are contacted up there.
Yes, we...
Because I think that is what I got from the last meeting is I wasn't sure who had been contacted. And I think going forward, I don't think it's come up in some way of informing people that if they want to be part of it, let them know when the meeting is, maybe form working groups or something. So they, I think it'll be, I think it'll be more successful, working with what they have and working with the field that they have been a part of it. I think they will be engaged with it and more willing to support it. And that's why I'm...
And Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Mitchell, I wholeheartedly agree. I think we want all the public feedback we can get. We've already been talking about, when they kicked this project off, they did postcards to every landowner in the county. We're planning on doing that. I don't know if anybody saw our display for the mountain plan down on the first floor. If you haven't, take a look, Holly and I worked hard on that. You know, just getting on the radio, getting on TV and just letting everyone know about that we're working on this and come tell us what you think.
I think often when you make some super, what we use, you call supervisors, these guys, they're communicating with people on the mountain. I tell you, I get 10 postcards stuck a day and I can read the notes like this. And so I think that having these guys work within their community and contacting people that they know, I think, I think it would be best to make people more involved.
Oh, turn on Matt's mic?
Do you want me to say it again?
I might have to say it all again, yeah.
I heard a whole lot of input. Get out, get a postcard, postcards to folks, get them involved.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would add that county's going through its budgeting process and we have requested additional funding in our postage and mailing line item to do just that.
Outstanding.
Yeah, I think the people out on Hat 6 and along 487 really need to be notified because I don't think a lot of them realize they're in this district.
Any other questions or comments from the planning and zoning commission? Anything else from staff?
I don't think so.
All right, well, I guess it's time to consider the implementation or the acceptance of the plan from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair would entertain a motion to consider the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan as presented.
Oh, it's still on. I would motion to approve the Casper...
I would motion to approve the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan update, and I guess with amendments to the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan.
A second. We have a motion and a second. I guess I missed that. That's part of staff's. What was that extra?
The amendments to the 2004, I guess they're changes to that.
Wait a minute. Where do I say that?
I think you're, yeah, your motion, the motion to approve amendments to the 2004 Casper Mountain Land Use Plan and forward it to the Board of Commissioners for adoption.
Okay.
Are we concerned that it's tabled, or not that big a deal?
Commissioner Gutierrez, that's a really good point, so we probably need a motion and a vote to remove it from the table for consideration now that we've had the public hearing.
Good idea.
I moved to remove it from the table to vote.
All right. Is there a second for removing the...
I'll say...
Mr. Grant and Mr. Zeal. All in favor of removing from the table, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay. And I'm assuming we still have a motion to approve amendments to the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan and forward to the Board of County Commissioners for public comment and adoption. And did we have a second? Was it Mr. Grant? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the Casper Mountain Land Use Plan as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Gentlemen and staff.
Thank you.
I believe that can, any public comment? Mr. Snyder?
Andrew Snyder, 8711 Everett Lane, I just wanted to, I've neglected to thank the staff and the consultants who I thought did a fantastic job, and I think, Mr. Mitchell, to your point, when this process started, we had a whole different staff team involved in it, and the difference in outreach and effort was night and day, and after that transition was made. So I really think that Neptreona County is in much stronger hands now and look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thanks.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. And I would also voice, Mr. Snyder's thanks to Logan Simpson for the extra effort you guys have put into this as well, so thank you very much. Any other public comment? Mr. Boyle? How are you?
Pretty good. Kelly Boyle, 7100 Colts Road. I got more out of this meeting than all the other meetings that I had attended, and I think it was a clarification from you stating on what the purpose of this meeting was for. I myself was under the understanding that this was going to be the code or the law. I didn't realize that this was just a step to get it to that process, and it might be easier in the future, or even at the zoning meetings, what we know what the core, the mission of that meeting is for. It could be just my ignorance of the politics that involve in this, but when you own a piece of property that other people look at, and then you're paying the property taxes on it, you really don't want somebody telling you what to do with it, but you do respect what they say. I just don't want to come underneath the law that says that I have to, you know, not do something, because that's not why I bought it, and then I was under the impression that the other, the older zone, whatever they call this thing.
Land Use Plan?
Yeah, the plan, the older plan was, was why I bought the property, so then all of a sudden, it's changing in the middle of it, and you're going, "What should I do here now?" I know, you know, because I'm subject to the laws of the land or the people that are looking at me instead of why, under the reason why I bought it. So this was a good meeting for me. I mean, she did an excellent job explaining what that was about, and I don't know if the original commissioners really understood that either, because it felt like it kind of all came together in this meeting, at least for us out here that's trying to find out. And the communication, it seemed to me like, "You guys all got our address, you all sent us a property tax notice." So all we needed is a notice for a meeting, and I mean, the people that pay their property taxes just need to be aware of it. Some of us and myself, I was born in the wrong year for internet communication, or Twitter, or whatever that, Facebook, or any of that other stuff. Mail is probably the best for me, and I think probably speaks a lot for a lot of the people on the mountain. But thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Kelly. Thanks for being here tonight.
I'll keep coming.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Adjourned at 7:51.